So I guess we should start the meeting if everybody is ready. Tonight is the. What is tonight? It is May 19th, 2020. And this is Bristol Planning Commission meeting and we will begin. We are going to review. Continue reviewing the unified development. Now, Chris. It's not a unified, it's Unified Development Regulations. It's not a unified planning document. Is that interchangeable? I thought that was.
It's semantics.
Throw out, I'll say one sometimes and the other other times. So Unified Development Regulations. We had talked about specifically looking at Section 2, which is the looking at the different zones and their dimensional standards, et cetera. And we are also gonna, I sent out to everybody a list that Chris had put together of some different zoning changes or updates that he feels should be made and looking over them, I agree with you on most of them, but we need to discuss that. Just so those were things that kind of, we didn't realize weren't working when we updated the zoning regs. So there are things that have Chris discovered along the way.
Yeah, they're, and most of them are, I won't say trivial, they're pretty basic. It was things that got, as we rewrote these from the top to bottom, it just either got overlooked or they just weren't got through at the level maybe we should have.
And, but they have caused some problems too. So it's important that we get them squared away. So. I, I have not been able to read over your comments, Kevin. You said your head was about to pop when you were done reading that. I didn't know if that meant you had a lot of comments because I sort of assumed that it did. But maybe we should go over Chris's list first, but I'm kind of jumping ahead of myself here. Do we have any minutes to approve?
Yeah, I think we have two weeks or two sessions to approve. They were all sent out.
Three weeks worth, and I think Bill sent all three weeks out to everyone.
Three weeks, okay.
Was everybody able to look at those and have any comments on those? Let's start with, I think the first one is for. It was 4/21/20. Actually, I had. I think 4/21/20. I have 4/21/20 and 5/21/20 on my list. Did you know what the other one was, Bill?
I think there was one in March.
Okay. Well, it's 5/21, we're looking into the future.
Oh, really? 5/5.
I think there was a March and an April.
Okay, well, did anyone have any comments or any change to the minutes?
So on 5/6, Bill sent out the following minutes, meeting of 5/5, 4/21, and 3/3.
There you go. That's right. Yep.
Because I asked him to. Thank you, Bill.
Yes, thank you.
And, okay, so was everybody able to read those and, and are you okay with them? Do you, can anyone make a motion?
I make a motion to accept.
All of them?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Do we have a second first? Your second. So Tom seconded. Do we have any discussion on that? Nope. Okay. Then the minutes are approved if everybody agrees.
Approved.
Okay. So the minutes of 3/3/20, 4/21/20, and 5/5/20 are approved. Great. So is there anything else anyone wants to talk about under administrative matters? About how much you love Zoom, maybe? No. Anything else? Nope. Hearing none? Okay. Let's then get into the zoning updates that Chris has put together for us. Chris, do you want to just go through them one at a time and explain where they are in the document? Or just note where they are and the problem and why you are making this? Yes.
Katie, Katie, can you scroll through the document to get to the right page that?
I will if he gives me a page number.
Ah, okay, great. That'd be super.
Katie, let's just go to the use table to start with, and that's probably a good start point.
Okay, can you give me a page number?
Right near the front.
It's all yellow.
No, no, go back.
Right there, whoop, right there.
Yeah, I got it. I got it. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you scroll down one page, Katie, to page two of this, to right there, that's good. So, under industrial uses, one of the things that I've run into quite a bit are people wanting to do some of these uses outside of just the commercial zone. Village Mix is another one that's come up. I didn't have that on the list. I forgot that that was another one that. And the big one has been business yards. So a business yard is anything that's not producing product. So landscaper, an excavator, they want to have their shop. They want to be able to build a building, service their vehicles, and run their business out of, out of a piece of property. This really has come up. I've got three in the village proper that have talked to me. They would love to move out of the village. Two of them are very visible. One is Masterson and one is Butler, and the other's a little bit smaller, but there's no land available down in the commercials district that's, that's cost effective. Tommy Laitup owns basically all the land that's available in the commercial zone. It's developable. He sold off about two thirds of it so far. There's not a lot of land left. After that, we were really running out of developable land for commercial. So when we look at it, if you look at the zoning maps, that at a minimum, RA5 and the Village Mix, Village Mix is sort of a hodgepodge of industrial and residential uses. And RA5 is a lot of the Route 116 corridor, both north and south. And those are spots that it sort of kind of makes sense that if you're going to expand that option out and give folks an option, that those would be an ideal place to do it. I really think they need to be conditional uses so that there can be things set, A, to make sure that it's compatible with the neighbors. That's the number one thing that a conditional use does. The second allows whichever, the upcoming DRB hopefully, to review things like hours of operation, noise, lighting, things like that. So expanding that use out a little bit, south business yards. I've had one person talk to me about a self-storage yard down in South 116. Those are really the two biggies that seem to be semi-compatible with those areas. If you look at them, it's sort of the logical spot where you might want to have the landscaper move his landscaper trailers and put up a small garage to services equipment instead of doing it on the corner of Mountain Street. So that's, that's the first bullet point.
Chris. Are all of those, do we not have business yard in any RA zone?
No, the only place it's allowed is in C1.
Okay.
So again, I think that was an oversight when we did these, is we, what happens if you look at the previous regs, they weren't allowed then either, and I, and it was, I think it was one of those when we got to this section, it was like, if it wasn't there before, we ain't changing it.
And that was, yeah, that was one of our mottos or.
Yeah. Which, what it is. But again, business yard and self-storage is one of, another one that I had a couple of people look at. That when you look at the other things we allow out, like the RA5, we allow like a repair shop or a service station. So having Greg Butler move his landscape business down to South 116 doesn't seem like it's incompatible with other things that we think work there.
Right. And especially if we have it as a conditional review.
Absolutely. I think conditional, and again, so I would be, if we, if you would look at RA5 and Village Mix, because the other spot with Village Mix is things like, I look at the business park that, that Kevin Harper's still working on over on, or even existing Bristol Works, if a if like Smith McLean's moving their business down to South 116, they already went through the whole process to do that. But if they had wanted to move into one of the business parks, technically you can't move your construction business or your excavating business. Now, again, from, from a conditional use, you could limit things like equipment in the yard and things like that, but they can't even build a shop to repair their own stuff in those spots, which is sort of possibly one of the, a logical tenet in a business park.
Kevin?
So I, I, I'm singing, I'm gonna sing the same song with these RA districts as well as a lot of the other districts. And I struggled quite a bit trying to understand why there were certain uses allowed in certain districts and not in others. The RA districts is very inconsistent on what's allowed and what isn't. And a lot of my notes were comments trying to rectify or understand why something was allowed in one distance. For, for instance, the one that really, I just can't believe it's there is you can put a town shed on Main Street, you know? So there's, there's a lot of fodder with, with these uses and what's allowed in each one of these districts.
So Chris, do you want to give a little more history? On, so I, I joined the planning commission, I don't know, 2014 maybe? And we were sort of just starting kind of sort of just starting this. It had been, it had been, it had been discussed previous and previously. And there was a lot of compromising, would you say, and negotiating? So there was a lot of that and I don't know, Chris was much more involved with it than I was. I was a new member at the time. So some of it is maybe, okay. What the heck? I didn't see that, but that's not necessarily right. So I don't know. I can't really.
Kevin, what are your specific problems with it? I mean, specifically?
I. I know, it would take, it would take a while to go through them all. Which, if you want to do it now or wait until we get through Chris's stuff.
Yeah, and either way, it's fine. I, I think we, a lot of your points you made, Kevin, as far as some of the inconsistencies are actually very valid. And so as Katie said, a little bit of the history. Excuse me. When we did this, sort of, as I said earlier, one of the mantras that we seemed to go by, which I, it is what it is, was if that's what it said before, somebody had to make a compelling case to change it. So there wasn't a lot of innovation or heavy thinking on a lot of this stuff. It was, oh, we've always allowed town sheds on, on Main Street. And the reason was, is at one point in time, there was a building on Main Street that was owned by the town. They might use it for this. So there's a lot of historical ick, for the last, lack of better term, that is sitting in these use tables. As I went through your, your comments, Kevin, I, there, a lot of those were discussions that were had that near the end, people were pretty beat up on this. We're like, you know what? If it was there before, just do it. We're, we're just gonna move on. We don't have time. So I, I think it very much warrants, if somebody goes through this and looks at it and says, why in God's name are we allowing a, a public works facility in the downtown? It's a good question. Maybe it shouldn't be there anymore. We don't have room for it in the downtown. And it would make more sense if we were gonna off, option it, heck, move it out to the RA5, out to the more rural districts. That's more where you would possibly see a town shed. So I don't know. Hopefully that helps a little bit of where the document came from. And I personally believe right now is as the planning commission, you all have the opportunity to look at these inconsistencies, rationalize them or not, and make some modifications where it makes sense to you all, because you've got a golden opportunity here to really look at these and go, I don't get that. And maybe there's a, there may be the one offset that a club is allowed on RA5 for some reason. I don't remember why, but there's, there might be some history behind it that we could come up with. But for the most part, I think everything should be on the table. Somebody sees an issue, you should present it and let's, I would make changes. But that's my two cents on that one. Again, my, my initial list, the biggest one I run into are the commercial uses out in the RA districts. Again, RA1, the real, that real drag or that real chunk of it, the predominant space of that is down along South 116 from about the store to Notch Road. Then you got RA2 scattered throughout there, and then RA5 is the big one. Those are big, long expanses of some current large parcels that could either be chopped up for a residential or somebody may want to buy them and do a combination of part of it they're gonna do their commercial, part of it they're gonna do residential. It's, it, there are other parts. There's some of it's up in the notch, some of it's out up in Mehan. So it is all over the place, but where I keep getting pushback is for these companies, for these businesses to move out of the village where they don't belong. I mean, when you think about it, Josh Masterson's excavating business and Greg Butler's landscaping business are the worst possible fit for our village proper. They, the employees, the equipment, the noise, the traffic load should not be happening in your village, in the center of your village. But they have to, because that's where they were prior to this and they can't move. The land that's down on, that's available in the C1 district, which is very limited, is very expensive, and it's not, it's not gonna work. So there's, there's more affordable lands and lands that actually could work into your mix. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, I'd like to make a comment about that. That, well, not about what Chris said, but that, I mean, that is, that is how I remember that process. As I said, I was new to the board and just trying to figure out what was going on. So, and it didn't, a lot of it didn't make, you know, I probably would have chose to have things one place or the other, but I was kind of going along and trying to figure out why, you know, the process. I think it would be great for, to look at this again. Right now, I think it is not a good time. We have several ongoing projects to, especially the town plan, which needs to get completed. This. So I think if we were to get into that, this piece of it, that would waylay the town plan for a longer amount of time, which we don't want to do. We really need to get that wrapped up. Then I believe, then we could come back to this. And I, I would like to work on that because I think there are some things that we could possibly change that would just make more sense. We, we don't have, you know, we could get the subdivision piece of it, the overall document, through the adoption process with some of these. I mean, not that we couldn't make some changes, but to get into a full-fledged discussion and really look at all of these uses is gonna take a while. And we just, I don't think that we can get in right now and not, you know, we gotta get the plan done. We gotta get the energy plan. We have things that need to get through the, you know, the, the process that had been on the table for a long time. So that's saying I agree that we could look at it, but I would like to take it as a separate project after these things are done.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
I, I agree with Katie. It's, this is, this is a big beast. I don't think it's something you could have, you could hash out tonight or even in a couple of weeks. So there's a hint, like I said, there's a few changes that I threw out there that have been major sticking points as far as zoning goes over the last few years since we did this, that I would love to see addressed every. A lot of the things that I saw in Kevin's comments are things that I think are in the bigger picture that you're talking about. The only other one that I noticed a lot of Kevin's notes, and I mentioned a little bit, is looking at the densities in the zones. Really increasing the density in a lot of the zones. And I think that's something you, you might be able to as a group do. But when, when we get down to that a little bit later, we can discuss it as a bigger picture. I said, the only real use change I see, I think on this, is just this one from my document.
Kevin?
I, I would argue that it, it needs to be done. Now, whether we take the time now and dedicate it to it or work it through with the, with the town plan, but the town plan is forward-looking and there's a lot of things that we're changing in that plan. And just to come about, come back out of the town plan and have a static set of zoning regs, because that's what we did 20 years ago, just doesn't make sense.
I agree with you, but we have, we have only so many people and so many hours in the day and we need, if we get that plan set, then we, and we can even do it concurrently if, if we want to get a, you know, a, a subcommittee to work on it and report in, that can happen. But we need to keep moving on the town plan and get that and the, with the enhanced energy plan, get that through the town.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that, but I think we've got the opportunity to, to really make this unified document reflect what the town plan is.
And I agree, because I also agree very much with the density piece. And you know, we started with, let's look at subdivision and all this other stuff has come up and it's become a bigger project. So we just can't get, we have to figure out how to do it both. So I mean, if we can figure out as a group how to keep them both moving, it may mean the, putting the subdivision, the, this, this piece on hold.
Right.
A little bit, but I, I'm not quite sure how we do that. I mean, we, we've now have two really big projects in the works. And, you know, we, we've got to get the plan done. The plan does theoretically come first. And then this could reflect, enable, you know, this basically implements the plan. So I agree with you. How do we do it?
So, I, I mean, one recommendation would be make some, if there's some major substantive changes that are, lack of better terms, easy to do, that really reflect, that don't impact the vision of what the current plan or even what the updated plan are. Maybe move forward with those. Set a hard timeframe where you want to move to the next level. That you want to have these voted on by town meeting of next year. So you can get your town plan done. As soon as that's done, you all move right into zoning regs. It would give you like four months to then jive your zoning regs against your town plan and have at it. I think that's a doable time. And because the heavy lifting's done, I think now it's really going through your uses. But that's my two cents on it.
I'd hate to see the subdivision regulations go past the election season this fall.
Me too. I, I think a lot of work's been done on the subdivision regs. And again, if we can make a few minor tweaks here to correct some oversights, that's great. If you feel that we shouldn't do any changes other than just the subdivision regs, I'm fine with that. I would love to see these few changes I've, I've asked for in there or part of them. And possibly addressing the density. Other than that, you all should come back and, and address the uses based on your plan that you pass.
When is the? So is it, we're, when would we be able to vote on, would it be election day now? We're not gonna make the.
Yeah. These dates are all over the place now because of all this COVID crap.
Right. And, and there's an extension on the whole municipal planning grant, so that doesn't matter.
Right. So I, I mean, honestly, if there's any way, if you guys could butt, but the problem is I don't think you're buttoning up the town plan between now and I think it's gotta be by mid next month. So I mean, we've got about three weeks. And I don't think that's doable.
To make, to make the November date?
Yeah, November, you could make without a, without a problem.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. So you wouldn't make the primary, which is still up in the air anyways.
Right.
Except for the, if you set your goal, have your, the subdivision regs, the minor zoning changes, the floodplain changes that are in this document as well that we had to add, and the town plan and enhanced energy plan, all ready for November, that's very doable. After November, set a goal to have zoning changes ready to go for town meeting day the following six months later.
Kevin, you won it sooner though. You would like.
I, I. Strategically, I understand. I understand what Chris is saying. I think, I think the priority is, it's not a priority for me, but the, the energy plan. But the town plan and the subdivision regulations are a priority, I think. And if we can sneak in the, the few modifications, look at density and start tweaking some of this stuff, see what the appetite is, and then we go into a detail, detailed look at Article 2 after November and have it ready for town meeting is, is probably the best, best alternative that we've got.
I mean, it, it's possible to kind of work if, if we have planning commission members working on the zoning and looking at, you know, make, coming into our meeting and saying, okay, well, you know, we'll, we'll talk about the town plan. We'll keep moving on the town plan, but we'll also have on the agenda, we can pick away at this as well, and we might be able to do it concurrently. It's possible. So if that's, we mean, we just need to be organized. So I, now, anybody else have anything to say on this matter? No?
Well, let me just add that I think the focus on one issue at a time is probably a good idea. And just go through each one and press on.
Okay. Okay, well, let's, let's see. Let's go through your list, Chris.
Yeah, that's, okay. So, so noodle over those, those two minor, those two. At a minimum, the contractor or business yard change to throw them into VB and the village business and, I mean, the Village Mix and RA5, that's something I would love to see. The next one. We, we limited accessory buildings in, in most districts to 1,000 square feet. Because we all thought it was gonna be garages. I've had two people that have talked to me about wanting to put up horse barns. And one person about a greenhouse. Neither one will qualify for an ag exemption. But so they both scaled back their projects and pulled it off. And their solution is they're probably just gonna build a second building right next to it, which is terrible planning. So coming, trying to fix that number on accessory buildings out, would be a great thing.
What kind of increase are we talking about? What do they need in square footage?
The horse barn, the horse barn was the biggest one that came to me, and they were, they really were hoping to get double that because they wanted to do horse store, they want to be able to have three to four stalls, some hay storage, an area to groom, and it, 1,000 square feet just wasn't big enough. And they weren't willing to jump through the, to go through the hoops to become ag certified for horses. It's not just. It, it's not just like, oh, I have four horses. I qualify for ag. You also have, there's a handful of other things to, to be qualified for ag exemptions from the state you have to do. And they're like, it's a hobby. I just want to have some horses. So their, their solution was they'll build the barn to store the horses in and a second structure right next to it to store horse, uh, to stare, store hay and, um, and have a, a grooming slash prep and tack area.
What part of Bristol is this?
Uh, it was up in the notch.
So is it an RA one, two, what?
Five.
Oh, God. That's got to be changed because that's just, uh, that just pushes something that is, has no sense. So they needed like 2,000 square feet?
Yeah. I, I think it was like 1,800 square feet is what they wanted.
What's a reasonable size?
Clarification first? I thought that the, what we decided last time it was a thousand square feet or 30% of the main building.
That's accessory dwelling. This is just
Dwelling, got it. Yes.
This is not a dwelling.
Got it. Yep.
Yeah.
Where is this defined then in this?
So like for RA five, it's defined on page 25.
Want me to go there?
Yeah, go there. That'd be great.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, just about every zone we do it in, every zone, it's a thousand square feet. So in the village, it might make sense to limit a garage to a thousand square feet because we don't want a, a five bay garage. But out in the, when you get a little more remote, uh, like RA two, RA five, I could see bumping those up to possibly even just doubling that number would probably suffice and make it more realistic to what people are looking at.
I think that's reasonable.
Right there. It's on the bottom there.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is. Got it. So that would be my, probably my, uh, out of the zones, probably the RA five and RA two, RA two and RA five. If we could bump that up to 2,000 square feet, that would be for the accessory buildings. That would be, that'd probably solve a lot of the issues. Again, this is, these are people that own large parcels out in the remote area. They would love to have some horses or some cows. And need the barn space and don't qualify for ag.
Well, I think this is very sensible. Can we vote on it?
Um, I, I think, why don't we? Well, why don't we just go do a straw poll? Cause we don't, so is anyone opposed? Just go through and tell, you know, say how you feel about it. Can, actually, we should go back to the first one because I don't know if we did that. And on the first one, I had a question. Are you suggesting that um, we allow it in RA one, two, and five, the business yard, or what were you? You don't say in your notes.
No, as I looked at it closer, I really, I look at it honestly, if you did village mix and RA five for the business yards, that would solve a lot of the issues and push it. Those are large expanses of, of area. It's, it seems moderately compatible with other uses. And it pulls those out of our village centers or even out of the higher density spots. You don't want these kinds of things in high density.
Right.
Like I said, RA five and VM would be the, village mix would be the two. I would recommend adding those two to the, uh, as conditional uses for, in, in a minimum business yard.
Why wouldn't you put RA two in there?
It, RA two is right on the cusp, Kevin. Two acres is, it, it's pushing it as far as it, how big the project is. But we do cover maximum lot coverage at 15% out in RA two. So that might solve some of that. But as we all know, I, I don't want these, you build the building, that's one thing. Next thing you know, you got a whole pile of equipment sitting out in the yard as well. Not be as compatible in RA two, um, as we'd want. But I can go either way on RA two.
Do you see village mix possibly as being a problem because you have smaller, you have a greater density?
Right.
And you have adjoining, you have adjacent residential. I, I'm more, actually more concerned about that.
Right. And, and I think that's why it needs to be a conditional use.
Okay.
And the number one question on conditional use, is it compatible with the neighborhood? I don't, Bristol Works would be the right place to have Masters and Movers Escavating Company. But down on Hewitt Road on some of that, maybe.
Right, right. Okay. So it's conditional use. So that makes a big difference.
It's huge.
Well, it, it also starts the banter between neighbors and the appellant, repellent too, which is unhealthy.
Can you say that again?
I said, when you start looking at having control, conditional use control it, then all of a sudden you're vying neighbors and repellents and that's not healthy. Be a lot clearer if it was, okay, we do it or we don't do it, you know?
Right. The, the downside of that, the problem with that, Kevin, and my only issue with that is village mix, there's parts of it that, like I said, there's a big chunk of Hewitt Road that it could make sense to do it down there. But over at Bristol Works, it may not be as logical. Right across the street on the, um, Jackman property, it probably makes sense. There is no neighbor there. So it, it, neighbors are gonna, i- if it doesn't fit in a neighborhood, I, I think you've got to give the neighbors a chance to voice their concern. And again, it's up to the DRB or ZBA, whoever's going to hear the hearing to determine whether or not their argument is valid. That's one of the big ones. Just because I come forward and say, I don't want to see an excavator on, um, Moncel Avenue, doesn't mean it can't go there. You, I gotta, I gotta make it compelling. And that it's not viable with the neighborhood, which
I just want to say something about conditional use. I think it's actually pretty, it's a, it's a pretty good process. It's not always neighbors against neighbors. I mean, it doesn't have to be that way at all. I mean, it really, you ask that question, does this use fit? And it might not even get, you know, to the point where people are upset about things. It's just like, that's not going to work in this area. And then, and then, but then there's also ways to make it fit better by you can, you have the same tools that you do in site plan where you can ask someone to put ahead, you know, you can have them have, put a hedge up or a fence or whatever, but in some, in a, in an area like village mix, you don't know where that's going to come up. So you don't want to prohibit it. But you want to be able to permit it if it's appropriate. And you can't really know that ahead of time.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that. I think it should be conditional use. Because that gives us a chance to take a look at what's actually going to happen. And it also gives us a chance to make a decision if in fact, this is something that is okay for this area. For a specific area.
And to be honest with you, Kevin, if after six months or a year, it turns out that this turns into like a, for lack of better terms, a political pissing match all the time, you all fix it. That's, that gives, that's the beauty of being the planning commission. I, I, I feel that this is a chance to fix an oversight earlier, correct cautiously, and if the caution is way cautious, fix it again in a, in a year or two. You, you're not locked into this for indefinite periods of time. That's the only good, that's the only thing I can say on that.
Well, can we agree that it needs to be changed and, and it can get tweaked later when we finalizing the use charts or the use matrix, whatever we call it then? It, can we agree as a group to move on?
Yeah. I, I, I don't think that's an, I don't think it's earth shattering if y'all add this change. It'd be nice if you could, like I said, I got two contractors that would love to move their stuff elsewhere. But if it's, if it's next year, it's next year. I don't think it's going to, I don't think it's me the straw that breaks the camel's back.
Well, I'll make a motion to, um, change VM and RA five per Chris's recommendations.
I second that motion.
Okay. I didn't think we were going to do official voting on this, but I guess we
We're there. Let's do it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Rob?
No.
And I, again, you don't have to tell me why, but would you like to tell us?
Well, I think we just need more conversation. If we're going to do those two, especially the village mix, is that there weren't more conversation, whether in the same time, possibly the RA two or the village residential, there's appropriate areas where
Oh, I lost you. Well, I'm going to go back. I'm going to go, I do not actually, as you said, we're there, but I do think that we need to not vote on these right now, because that wasn't the plan. It was, we're going to vote on the whole document. But we're not there yet.
Well, uh, just to
Be an asterisk, you know, that we need, this one needs more conversation.
Right. But, um, but you have a motion on the, on the floor. Then a motion in a second, you've had a vote, uh, started a vote. Just pull it back for Robert Tools. You, you, that's just procedural.
All right, all right.
Well, I, uh, I'm not sure if I can undo it, but my intent was we are getting really fuzzy on what we're talking about and we should understand what we're talking about and move on.
Right. So i- if you want to rescind this and make it just a potential recommendation, finish your vote. It's what, five, two, five, one, whatever it is. Make a second motion to rescind the previous motion. I know it sounds trivial, but that's procedurally correct.
I'll make the motion to rescind.
I mean, we need a second?
Second.
Rob's second. I didn't ask you to take minutes, Bill, but I assume you are.
I'm doing it.
Okay.
As I can.
Okay.
I, I guess my concern is that we get clear somehow on what we're agreeing to.
Let's finish what we're doing. So you made a motion to rescind with seconded, all in favor of rescinding?
Aye, okay.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. That is done.
Yes.
Now, you have a discussion about that, Kevin?
I just am concerned that we get crisp about this and understand what we're agreeing to and not agreeing to.
Right. We need more discussion about it. Let, well, we sort of jumped into this big topic tonight. Without a lot. I, well, I don't know. I, I don't think there was a lot of, um, prep, you know, anticipation on this. I mean, I wasn't thinking that we were going to be picking away at the use chart tonight. I thought we were going to be kind of airing some. But it is a big, but there's concerns and it's important. That when we jumped, when we started this project, it was about subdivision regs. But then it became a, a unified document. So now we're looking at the whole, all of the zoning regs. That's a, a bigger project. You're shaking your head, but we made a choice to do that. And so it, we had this little, um, sort of hiatus from the plan so that we could get the subdivisions done. Now we, we need to get back to the plan. I, they're both very, very important. I don't want to not give either one of them the time that they need. So it's kind of a priority thing. I'm not saying let's rush through this and not do it correctly. I mean, I, let's like hear from the group. I, I'm not going to make the decision of how we should proceed, but we do need to have a bigger discussion on, because it's going to go back and forth. And that's why, as Chris said, this is a, this is not a quick thing to go through. So I, I, I'm a little confused at how to move forward right now. So if anyone wants to
Well, I mean, if, if the, the thing that we're dwelling on here is the uses. And as Kevin has brought up, he says, he has seen some inconsistencies in the uses. All right. So my thinking is this is all very detailed work. It takes a lot of time to talk it out. I think there should be a subcommittee of two or three people that communicate, uh, and get their thoughts together, draw up a use table and then present it to the, uh, the rest of the folks in the commission. This is very detailed work.
Right. I would actually like if we need, if this first item on Chris's list is if we can't come to any a general straw poll agreement on it, let's, let's highlight that. That will be, you know, put, you know, to return to later. Let's go through, see what, if we can make any headway on these other ones, just get them out of the way. We'll go back to the ones that are more difficult so that we can make some progress.
Okay.
And, but we're not going to skip over anything or not make a decision on something that is not clear. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So that's, and, and I would prefer not to vote on these right now and just if we're not in agreement and it's, and people are confused about the issue, we need more information, we'll come back to it. So let's just have, if we agree on, on one of these recommendations, we'll, we'll say we're good with that. And, and we'll come back to the ones that we're, we're not clear on. So, uh, let's keep moving. So we, we are good with the second one. I assume that we agreed to that.
Well, again, that was the idea of doubling from 1,000 to 2,000 square feet.
Okay. Okay. All right. Now we're going to move to the third one, Chris. You're back on. So home business not allowed in HDR.
Yeah. And honestly, if you're going to look at the whole use table, I would table that till we get to that.
Okay.
Um, the next one is certificate of occupancy. It's sort of a nebulous thing. Statute says we have to, I have to provide a certificate of occupancy. But that's all it says and that's all our regs say. It doesn't clarify what it is. One thing that Moncton does that I like, in order to get a certificate of occupancy, there's four, um, criteria that have to be met. I'm not a building inspector nor is, uh, or is any zoning administrator ever going to be. But the, they have, has to have a, um, running water, cook surface, eating system. And I want to say a flushing toilet. Those things they have deemed are considered what would make a house livable. I, so it's things that anyone can walk in and look at. I can flush a toilet and know that it works. If you're, if you guys are fine with that, I will write up, I will forward you the language that we use in Moncton. You might want to add just to the home occupancy piece. It's super easy, but it gives some clarity to, right now, somebody calls me for a home occupancy, I go up and say, yep, you built what you said you were going to build. Check. And I hand them a C O. It's weak.
That's how it is in many towns. I'm not saying that's right.
Oh, I know.
But it is.
As well, as far as making sure they have all their permits in order and proof.
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
It's basically, is the house, it's more about exterior than interior. It's not a building inspection. It's, is the house located where it is permit, where it was permitted? That's pretty much what it was in New Haven, you know?
So, so Chris, Chris, right now, when you give out a, you give out a certificate of occupancy, right? So you're just really looking, is it, is it there? Is it what they said? And you don't go in and do the other stuff. Well, I think that's really important.
But to Rob's, to Rob's point, if But to Rob's, to Rob's point, if, if our regulations are driving permits beyond the zoning permit, we should be checking those as well?
Right, and, and that is, I wanna say that, again, the, but I said they had to have a flushing toilet. I think they actually, they have, you know, it states that they have to have a state wastewater permit as well, and-
And that has to be inspected, but, so that, that is beyond our purview. So, that's not, you know,
No.
That's in the permit that says that you can't give someone a certificate of occupancy without that, that box being checked. I'm sorry, Rob.
No, and that's why I wanted to make sure that that certificate of occupancy was verifying that permits were in order, just that they had them, not a check of them or anything, just that-
Wastewater permit, a- any kind of exterior permit, not doing a interior inspection of wiring and not, that-
Right.
It's not included. It's, it's basically the wastewater or any other agreements or right of ways, things like that are, that are, that go back and check into the previous deeds, things that were carried forward from previous owners or coming in around the land.
So, the two, the only two that we check right now is, do you have a wastewater permit and do you have a curb cut? That's all it is.
John, would you like to speak? John Moyers? Oh, you're muted.
I unread myself. Thanks. Hi, everybody. Just, just to flag something, you don't actually have to discuss it here, but hopefully you would discuss it when it's appropriate in the future. But as a landlord, somebody who's purchased two downtown properties in the last couple of years and renovated them, you know, when I bought the 22 Main and 11 Main Street in 2018, I found the residences there, and really the whole buildings, but definitely the residences were what raised my, my eyebrows, in utterly deplorable and frankly dangerous conditions. I mean, dangerous to the point of, not just to the occupants, but to, in the case of these downtown buildings that share walls, to adjacent property owners in terms of fire risk and that sort of thing. So, you know, places that were literally not unheated, they had a heating unit in them, but unless you were gonna spend maybe a thousand dollars or more a month for propane, I doubt you could keep it at 50 degrees. Knob and tube wi- knob and tube wiring, like exposed and, and with junk piled on top of it, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pounds of metal and other kinds mattresses and junk piled on top of active hot knob and tube wiring, stuff like that. Almost unfunctional kitchens, no real plumbing network. Every time somebody takes a shower, for example, it rains down on the people below, things like that. I hope Bristol would consider, the state does CFOs, like, I renovate a building, I can't occupy it until I get the state CFO. And they're checking that I lived up to my, all the permits that I pulled for doing electrical and plumbing and all that stuff, all the life safety stuff, you know? And so, you know, Bristol could have a CFO system that also has some means, some mechanism that allows for review of buildings in extent for their current condition. In some cases, at least downtown, where the buildings are so close to each other, that could be a serviceable thing, and without some mechanism by, by which, say, even tenants themselves in their apartment could say, hey, my landlord is not providing adequate heat, or I don't have plumbing that works half the winter, or every time I take a shower, it rains down on the floor below me. None of those are humane conditions that should exist, and yet there's no system in the town to, to even begin addressing those, much less have any sort of resolution. So, I hope that when you think about CFOs, that you also include some thought about a mechanism by which at least somebody could raise concerns and bring some official attention to conditions that are, you know, unsafe for occupants and unsafe for neighbors. I'll leave it at that.
It's a big problem, thank you. That is a big problem, and I've come across that in a lot of the housing work that I'm doing with Addison County, that it's a hard thing because they're rental properties and they're substandard and it, it's a bigger problem, and it does not necessarily tie to this CFO. It's, you know, it, it's another system.
It, it is, except that in our, in the very preface of our town plan as it's written today, it says something, I don't have it here and I haven't read it for a while.
The next one too, because-
But what it says is, "To ensure adequate, safe, and efficient housing for residents." That, if that's not a mission, nothing is. If that's not clear, nothing is.
I agree. I totally agree with you, and that's something, it is a problem in every community, unfortunately, and it's, yeah, but that's a good point. Thank you. Okay, where were we?
So, yeah, so-
Alright, so it needs, it's not clear. The certificate of occupancy not clear, do we need a better definition?
Like I said, I can send one out. I'll pull it together this week and email it out to you guys. Just to get, it's really creating four basic physical rudimentary checks that anybody could do. Make sure that the house is actually inhabitable at the point of the issuance of that certificate.
So, I guess we just need to see what that looks like, so if that's something you wanna get examples for or to make that clear, or, and also maybe where'd you go? Or, example from another community. Okay, let's move to the, I'm gonna try to move things along.
Absolutely.
Let's go to the next one. Thanks.
What was?
Site plan review.
Oh. This may be a bigger beast. This is one we've run into, you guys have had a few issues with it where you're doing a site plan review for a change of use on Main Street-
Oh, yeah.
Building. I don't know how to address that one. I don't have a good answer. Just I know it's a problem.
I was thinking about that, so just to let people know what we're talking about, and I don't know if we've had one of these, we might have had one of these applications maybe last summer, where someone came in, and I'll just use the example of the Harmonia Hair Salon. Right, what?
I said exactly.
Right, prior to, what were, what was in there before now? I can't think of it.
Our store.
Yeah, it was a grooming establishment of some type.
No, no.
For pets, right?
It was the auto parts store.
Oh.
No, no, no.
Recycled reading.
It was recycled reading.
Right, so recycled reading left and-
No. Oh, yes, you're right. Honey Light is in the auto parts. You're right.
Right. So, they had, they, they, the way our, our zoning is set up is that they had to have a site plan review for that, basically just a change of use, and that it, it's hard to, that was kind of an oversight on our part, I would say. It really is a change of use. I think it should be reviewed as a change of use, and how do you do that? Because the use might not be appropriate, so then, then it does come to that question of a conditional use, and because-
Do we need to change some of the uses to permitted?
Or we could change some of the uses to permitted, yeah.
I mean, you're not gonna catch everything that way.
Right, and that, that might, that use might, that might have been permitted, as far as, I'm not even sure. So, it does not make sense to have a site plan review because there is no site to, there's nothing that will be changed, because it's all interior.
Right.
So, um, well, I think these are all good. We should just go and discuss these. If we have concerns, we don't have to agree, disagree, and then they can be presented later when we look at everything. Does that make sense?
Yep, okay.
Okay, so, so this is really just for discussion to take down concerns about them.
So, the next, the next one then, as we move on, is, and it really reflects some of Kevin's comments, where density might be a little low. A great example is Susan Bowen, who owns the Woodland Apartments, has gone through the Act 250 process to build two more buildings down there. The problem is the density we created. There, she's gonna build on two building lots, five total units. She has buildings that have four and five units in them that are better use of the space. The, the number is way too low for multifamily, or the number, I've had half a dozen people that have bought parcels out in half acre zoning. They wanna know if they can turn them into duplexes. Can't do it, because it, it's, it's half acre zoning, they only have a half acre, and it, density's only one dwelling unit. So, I'd really like to look at the densities in all the zones. That, I think, might be a bigger conversation elsewhere. I don't know. Just my, that's the big concern I've got on, on the densities.
This is where, and this probably ties into what, some of your concerns, Kevin, and definitely some of my issues that I would like to try to address with this is maybe thinking about getting away from density being defined as a unit and look at it as square footage. So, in that case, you can get a greater density in some cases. So, if you had, if you had one unit that's small, you could have, well, it's a bigger conversation. I don't have my notes ready, but-
Chris, can you, can you give that example again, so we, we can understand what the problem was?
Sure.
Or is?
Absolutely. So, Susan Bowen, who, they own Woodland Apartments down on Lover's Lane, that apartment complex down there. She applied for a site plan to build two new buildings. Has gone through the Act 250 process, but while she was in front of the zoning board, it was discovered that the density is way lower than what she was hoping for. She wanted to build two four-unit buildings, I think it was. And the density is, on, she's in Village Mix, is, give me two seconds. Two units per acre.
Ah. Okay.
It's, it's one acre that she, I was like, she's got like two and a half acres, she's trying to build these two apartment buildings on that match everything else that's in that complex. It's a great use of that space, but she had to scale it back, and now isn't even sure if she can build it, because to only do five units is not very cost effective, and it doesn't, housing problem.
There wasn't a site plan review, because she wouldn't have gone to the zoning board.
It's a conditional use.
Okay. So, why is it conditional use?
These multifamilies, conditional use in the village mix.
Right, but is, isn't it part of the existing?
No, so it's-
Apartments?
No, it, it was where the old water system used to be in there, on the property.
Okay, so it's not part of the same?
I mean, it, it's on the same road, but it's not, it, it's a separate standalone parcel.
Okay.
So, but if anyone wanted to build that down there, they would have been limited to very, a very few units on very, there should be tight density. So, when it comes to multifamily, we treat multifamily as though it needs the same amount of acreage as a single family home, and it, it's a different beast, it's a different concept. Yes, still keep it conditional, or even site planned, so you make sure you have adequate parking and meet other criteria. I'm good with that. But bumping up multifamily and/or duplex on all the zones actually makes sense.
Well, that is that bigger conversation, so, about density.
Oh, it's, exactly. It's part of that huge density discussion, but that, that's the issue.
Okay, next is easier.
Um, it is, to a degree.
Can I say something about density?
Yes.
Since, this, this is for your larger discussion down the road, not necessarily for a response now, but if you're gonna have a larger discussion, I'm all for density, like, I believe in density. I live in the village, I'm an environmentalist, and we're all asking people for a variety of reasons to live in denser communities, and that's where the world is going. So, density is an attribute, I think. If we're gonna have density, though, we also have to empower citizens to confront issues as neighbors that may arise from that density. So, light pollution and noise pollution. We have, we have lighting regulations that are actually pretty good, but they're completely unenforced. We have no noise ordinance. The standard for the noise ordinance that we have is whether something is a nuisance, which, and there's no authority to go to, to who decides it's a nuisance or not. One man's nuisance is another man's air conditioning. And so, that's not very empowering for neighbors and citizens, and, you know, to the extent that you can improve density, that's great, but then please give us the tools to make that density livable and tolerable, so that we don't, so that our waste noise doesn't impact our neighbors, and if it does, there's a neighborly way of doing it that doesn't require, as it does now, litigation to deal with that. If a neighbor is not, you know, we, we need this system by which we can, we can have the high density and have a way of engaging at the, at the town level the problems that arise from density, noise and light being two principal ones. So, I hope that's part of your discussion about empowering by having, creating a mechanism for those complaints to be dealt with through the town, so they don't have to go into the state system. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, John. Okay.
Anything else on density at the moment?
Yep, let's move on.
Alright, so the last one is, is one that has popped up recently. So, as we know, our, our trail network that's being created throughout our community is great. I think any opportunity we have to provide some outdoor recreation is, is beautiful. We made some minor snafus back when we created the, the zoning. The big one was, we included trails in outdoor recreation. Nope, I lost Katie. I was hoping, Katie, if you could-
Yep.
Now, just to the next page for me?
Yep.
Perfect, right there. Actually, come up just a tiny bit, so we can see the header. There we go. So, if you look across, outdoor recreation is not allowed in our, in all of the town. The high-density residential, which is most the village, village mix, and village business, which is our downtown, and the Bristol Pond District, which is out behind Bristol Pond. That's all. Outdoor recreation is, it, the, when we talked about it way back when, was, oh, we didn't want, it didn't make sense to burn up large volumes of open land in those spaces. What we ran into is hiking trails are listed as part of outdoor recreation. I.e., three-quarters of the Bristol Trail Network right now is not compliant. And we, you, you need to fix that. So, if you go to the definitions, the very end of, and I'll give you a page number here in a sec, Katie.
Yep.
Uh, go, 92.
Whoa.
Oh, 91.
Getting there.
Uh, yep, you're almost there. Keep going down. No, you gotta go further south.
91.
I was, oh, I'm sorry, that's on the old document. It's probably around 98, 99, now with all the added stuff, sorry, my bad. These are alphabetical now in your definition, so you wanna get to rec-
Alright, alright, alright. What are we looking for?
Recreation.
Oh, or a C's, alright, we gotta, where's you go?
Yeah, you got about six, eight more pages here. Here we go, we're almost there. Little further. There it is. Okay, right, yeah. So recreation outdoor, the examples, athletic fields, sports courts, tracks, trails. That's the problem. So you either need to remove trails, but the definition still leaves it sort of nebulous. You would be better off to add site plan to all of those locations or conditional use to all places within the town to allow outdoor recreation. The site plan would ensure that there's adequate parking. One issue with anything of, of like a trail is, is there enough parking at the trailhead? That needs to be determined. I'm fine with site plan, conditional uses, doesn't make sense to put a soccer field on, in the middle of a neighborhood, maybe not. So that's my two cents, it's just one that needs to be fixed. Or the, the trail network that is work, that a lot of people in this town have worked very hard on, may come to a screeching halt.
So a couple of comments is, one is, if you remove trails from the definition, it's not defined, therefore it's also prohibited?
That's what I was gonna suggest, why can't we just take trails out of the definition?
And then the other thing is, is there's a lot of parks and there's a lot of conservation land that's open for recreation. And I don't know exactly how those things fit in either.
Right, and that's where I, I think it would make more sense, add recreation to, as either a site plan or conditional use, to all the zones that is not currently listed.
Can I go back to the use chart?
It is, I'm sorry to throw that on there, but this is one of those that I'm being pressured a little bit from.
Let me go back, is everyone okay if I go back to the use chart? If I go back to the use chart, do you need to see the definition? Okay. I just want to see where we have it allowed, not allowed.
Only allowed in one place.
Oh, I, so it's by right use anyways. So in your Village Business, which is your downtown, your Village Mix, your high-density residential in the Bristol Pond District, it's not allowed. So I would recommend again, it either has to be conditional or site planned on all the, you could site plan all those and it would be fine.
Yeah, that does make sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. So do we want to discuss this at a later date?
Um, I, I think that's kind of a no-brainer, but that's my opinion on that. But I mean, we still, we're gonna, we're gonna accept, we're gonna talk about it all again, you know, but if just if we have a general sense, if people have a problem with this or not, or if they're in favor of, of making this change that Chris has suggested without, you know, any other conversation, we can certainly change our mind about that, but just for our notes now.
So we're doing, Chris's suggestion is site plan across the whole thing.
Um, not site plan, isn't there some conditional?
Yeah, I would leave the.
There's five conditionals. Do you want site plan across the whole thing? Or you want to leave those five conditionals?
Leave, leave your conditionals conditional, add site plan as the current prohibited.
Okay.
Spaces should be.
So in Bristol Pond, HDR.
Village Mix and Village Business.
Okay.
So is everybody sort of in a general agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. General agreement. Okay, Chris.
That's all the big changes, changes I have. The only other one, and this is while you're looking at your table, and this is a philosophical discussion to have yet again. One thing that Bristol states in their zoning, right in section 300, which is the application of regulations, says, "Any use not permitted by these regulations shall be deemed prohibited." It creates a bit of a narrow-minded zoning. You, if something is not on this table with a letter in it, it is not allowed in your town. So other communities, especially what they've done is, and I can send out verbiage, Moncton's got great verbiage on it, as far as their conditional use. If you can show that it is a similar use that is, that is allowed or conditional, then it can go to the board for them to approve. A great example was in Moncton, they had a location where veterinary clinic was allowed, but a grooming business wouldn't have been. And when you think about it, they're, that same impact. They allowed the groomer to go to the board, make their argument that it's the exact same impact as a vet office. Dogs barking, traffic, the whole nine yards, and they allowed that use. So that's something I, I would like to see you ponder for, not tonight, but just keep out in your minds that it would allow you to look at uses that are on this table, that somebody may come to, come to the boards with an idea that it's terrible to have to say no because it just ain't listed, because we didn't think of it.
So, so getting around that, you're saying if we have a statement, like a disclaimer saying if there's a use listed, because people have the, an applicant has the opportunity to come and make an argument that it's similar to another use.
Yes, so I, you.
So it's basically just text.
Right, and so it's not, basically you eliminate that, that line where it's not permitted, it's prohibited. That if it's not, if it's not permitted, it can be reviewed as a conditional use.
Where is that?
Uh, section three, it's on page 32 of my existing document, it's section 300. So go down about.
Right, I don't need to find it, but I was gonna say that it would be good if you could the comments that we talked about tonight and any other thing like that, if you could mark up.
Absolutely.
And initials, so that that would be, or anything else.
Yeah, that's probably, that's all I've got for this. Like I said, those are the, that's just one that it's, I ran into it again recently in Moncton. I'm like, oh, it would be nice if we had it in Bristol. If it's, if it's on the use table and it already prohibited, leave it as prohibited. But if it's not on this table, it gives the, an applicant the ability, who's creative, to come in and say, you know what? My, again, my dog grooming business is just, is no different than a veterinary clinic as far as impact. Why can't I have it where you can have a vet clinic? That's typically the example I have today. So it would be something to think about.
Okay. All right.
And that's all I got.
So we need to figure out where we steer this ship next. Sorry. And let's see, because we need to get back to the plan. And so maybe we should talk a little bit about schedule. That wasn't really, unless someone else has something else, say, you know, want to contribute to, you know, just in terms of thinking about moving forward. We have more conversation that has to happen here.
Let me ask you, let me ask you a question here. Sounds like we're in three different directions here all of a sudden. And I think I'm trying to focus on the primary issues, and it sounds like the plan itself is the bigger thing to begin with, right?
The plan, well, we've already, I mean, we need to, we need to continue meeting and, you know, reviewing that. Now I don't, that's.
What do you see is the biggest issue?
We need to get the plan completed.
Okay, let's focus on that.
Plan and, yeah, and the energy, and the energy, enhanced energy plan to the select board and then to warn it and eventually get it voted on. So, but that's a process that has to go through.
Say, let's aim toward that then.
Okay. Then does the, do the subdivision regs then get tabled until we get that completed? Or do we try to have a a subcommittee, look at some of this stuff, discuss some of these issues and bring it back to the?
But Katie, wasn't, isn't the subdivision pretty much in the bag? I mean, that was rewritten over and over again.
But what was done was, it's not a separate document. It was combined with our existing zoning regs, which we're looking at tonight, to be the Unified Development Review Regulations. So if we're gonna make these changes or these, all these other things that we have discussed tonight and haven't been able to come to a conclusion on or any, and other things that we haven't discussed, it is now all one document. And so that was sort of my frustration earlier, that we have all other very important projects now, a very important thing we need to deal with. If we had kept the two documents separate, it wouldn't have been an issue, but we all agreed to have it as one document, which I do think is a better end result. We just, we just have the opportunity to make these other changes. Or, or we could bring it through, try to get it, you know, try to get it through the process, get it adopted, and then come back to it. So all of a sudden, you know, not all of a sudden, but right now I see that we have these two big projects that are midstream. Do you follow me?
I'm, I'm a little mixed up, but I got a piece of it.
Am I that unclear? I apologize. We know where we are with the plan. Right?
Uh, yeah.
So when we asked Adam to do, when Adam did the subdivision regs, subdivision regs can stand separately, they can stand on their own, or you can combine them with your zoning regs, and then they become a unified development document, unified planning document. That is what we decided to do.
Yes.
So when that, that needs to get re-adopted and then approved by the town, so to make that, you know, a working document, but, but we have this opportunity now to make some other changes in the zoning piece of it. And that's what we're discussing tonight. So there's more, there's more issues here that people want, that it appears that people want to talk about. I would like to talk about the density issue, some of these, you know, use issues.
Well, just using the subdivision piece, will we run the subdivision through the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 areas of our, of our town? Or subdivision? I'm sorry?
What do you mean, the zoning areas?
Yes.
Well, it all just becomes one document, so the whole, it's part of the same document.
Okay, but.
The, when you, when you go through a subdivision process, it's just a separate, it's a different process. I mean, we're, right now, we're talking about uses, what's allowed where. We're not talking about going through the subdivision process, which is, is one of the process, one of the processes that this document outlines. It's just one piece of this overall document, this, Jeff?
So if I understand, and I'm, you know, I'm new to this, but the purpose here was to do the subdivision regs, not to review every use in the zoning documents.
It wasn't necessarily, no.
And I can see, just looking at it, that every one of these uses would be a discussion. Not everyone, but.
So it's like.
There are some that are so anomalous. You know, why is a veterinary clinic allowed in the high-density residential area on a conditional use, but not in the village residential area and the commercial area? I'm sure there's a history there, and I'm sure there's a history on dozens of these, which probably seems to me as not a productive use right now, if your purpose is to get subdivision regulations. Maybe it's, of course, we started down the road of making changes now, use changes. It's just a question of where you want to cut it off, I would say.
Exactly. And so I'm trying to be diplomatic and hear everything. I have, I have things that I'm concerned about too. And, um, but we don't want to get bogged down right now in this, but we also don't want to miss an opportunity to make some changes that are affecting people, like not being able to, you know, have a greenhouse on their piece of property where they should be able to have a greenhouse because it's a farm, you know, farmland that I'm referring to the accessory dwelling. And so some of those things that really affect people, we have always talked about trying to change, fix those pieces when we had an opportunity. But yes, it's like with the plan update, we probably got into the weeds a little bit too much in terms of not just updating the statistics and this and that, but it's hard not, you know, it's the mission creep thing where you just get too bogged down. And so that is why we have to make some decisions in terms of where do you cut it off, do you cut it off?
Where, where are we with the plan currently? Because it's been two and a half months since we last met and discussed it, the plan itself.
Right.
You know, there was a gap.
They're pretty, pretty much where.
Which was where?
We were gonna have an open house on April 7th, and that got canceled. And then we, as a planning commission, shifted over to subdivision regs. Andrew's pretty much our emergency management person, and he's been dealing with all of that at regional planning, so there really hasn't been a lot of work done on that. So that's pretty much been on hold.
But do you recall what we have left to go through and address in that?
Uh, there, we need to go through the flood resiliency piece. I believe we had started to discuss the land use section. I can't remember if we, I, I can't, I don't really know right off the top of my head, but it definitely is getting close. But we need to, you know, get back there. I mean, I, I could say, you know, why we could maybe, let's see, what is?
My, my thoughts, my feelings are that the subdivision stuff's important, and we've gotten through that. We've gotten that together, and then we're down this road of a new zoning combined document. And it does make sense to make updates and address the issues that there are in that zoning document before it's reissued. It doesn't make sense to do it and then do amendments to it or changes to it shortly thereafter. But the focus, I think, should be on the plan and getting that wrapped and shipped down the road and then get back on this as soon as we can, because the plan was the major thing. And that's what needs to get done first, I think.
Well, second that, Rob, let's, let's focus on the big issue and get that done.
If, if we go back and look to plan, we need to be concise. There was a lot of loose ends, there's a lot of divergent activity. We need to refocus and we need to get crisp, and we need to finish it up. I still, and I still feel subdivision regulations are very important to go before the voters in November. And in order to do that, we need to get crisp, and we need to get organized and understand what the gaps are on the plan and fill them and get done with it.
So I'll just offer my two cents on it. The subdivision regs are, are critical. This has been a, a directive for me from the select board from day one of having this position for two and a half years. We've been working at it for a while to get them done. They, the subdivision aspect of it is done, in my mind, to the point where you could send those to the select board. If you want to hold off on all the uses and all the other modifications, I'm fine with that. I just thought there was a handful of them that if we had an opportunity, we could do them. It means table until later, I'm fine with that. But to delay the subdivision regs is absolutely a bad decision. I think you could have this document, as it stands today, to the select board and finish your town plan all in a timely manner. You could vote on both in November. You could vote on both in November.
I vote for you, Chris. That sounded like a, um, campaign speech. I, I agree. I agree. We gotta do it though, you know, and, and it's not like we're not working.
No.
I think, I think people have been doing great. We've been doing a great job, you know, considering. Uh, I learned how to share the screen tonight. Um, so uh, I just, we need to keep moving forward. I think we've made some, you know, good progress in the last three meetings. And do we want? So the next meeting.
I think we need an extra one.
Well, we'll be, we'll be extra meeting. We've been doing two meetings a month. Do you mean a third?
No, no, no. I mean, I'm calling the second one an extra.
Okay.
We ought to continue with that.
Okay. So, yeah, so the next meeting would be, um, June 2nd, I believe. Is that right?
Yeah. Uh, no. Yes. Oh, yes. Yes, yes, yes.
And I am going to have actually a conflict on June 16th. So, but that's okay because if we get, if we, how about we shoot for on June 2nd? We regroup with the plan, get some very specific things to discuss and review. Well, we'll review the plan and, and, you know, kind of do an outline of where, what we have to complete and how we need to do it and, and move forward on that.
I, I would suggest that we have a matrix for that plan that's out to everybody a week before the meeting.
A matrix of what is done and what needs to be done?
Yes.
That sounds like a good idea.
You actually have one of those. Um, so we can do that.
So the, the other two pieces to think about, um, is how you want to have some public meetings and or forums. That is part of the requirements of any of these changes. So try to be creative. There's ways to do it. I don't know what they are off the top of my head. That's something to noodle through. Um, I would say by the next meeting, come with some ideas. Um, at least, that's to be a discussion you have. The second is, Katie, what is Andrew's availability going to be going forward as, as the, his emergency?
No, he's, he's, you know, he's gotta get back on it. He's just, the, the thing is he gets interrupted, you know, it's like, there's a lot of stuff coming up, a lot of, but you know, we're all kind of getting used to, to what we're getting used to. And he know, he knows that it is there hanging over his head. So okay. Matrix for, in a week that would be. All right?
Yes.
And in terms of, yeah, the public engagement part and, um, public participation in terms of feedback on the plan, like we were gonna have, you know, our open house, that obviously is difficult to do those sort of activities. So we'll have to figure out something. But it seems like people are participating in, uh, in Zoom meetings actually more. I've, I've been to a couple of public meetings that, um, community meetings that there were a lot of participants, which was interesting. All right, so let's, for June, we'll, we'll get back on the plan. Okay. I appreciate your input. Anything else from anybody? Tonight?
I just have a question. Where does that leave us then on the subdivision regs? Have we decided how we're moving forward on them or?
Well, we're gonna get back to the plan. We can't. The subdivision piece is done. As Chris said, we're basically tweaking the zoning piece. We don't have a subdivision document, so to speak, that within this total unified document.
It's, it's two separate things. Subdivisions are one aspect. The subdivisions and creating, and adding them to the, the existing zoning regs and renaming it was one. Modifying all the other pieces of it, that's part two. Part two put off until uh, after you get done with the plan. If you have time before the, after the plan's done and you may be able to tackle some of the low hanging fruit, do it. If not, wait till after it's done and, and you vote on it in November.
The last time it was done, how many years did it take us?
Three.
Well, I know, but we've got a working foundation.
Yeah, it's a much better document now.
Yeah, I know, but it took a long time and a lot of that was because there's a lot to discuss and a lot of different opinions on it. Um, and that's probably why way back it was like, okay, if it's like this, let's just leave it. So, but there are obvious things that I think everyone is seeing that could be, um, improved on. Anything else? Does that answer your question?
Well, it seems you have three options. You can just submit, you know, have a U D R which has the subdivision regs added, no other changes. That's option one. If I understand this, the other one is a U D R with the subdivision regulations and some other changes, which for instance, Chris has seen are pertinent issues that come up all the time, but not theoretical issues. So you don't go through every use, just uses which he is seeing or other people have seen to be problematic. Or option three is to go through the entire use table. And try to change the whole document. So it's just a, unless I'm misunderstanding, those are the, those are the three options and you should probably just decide which one we want to do. It doesn't have to be today. Obviously it can't be today.
I, I think you hit the nail on the head, Jeff. And, and I would say that go down option one at the moment. If you have time after you're done with the plan to review option two, which is the handful of, of high, high level changes that should happen, that's great. If you have time to get into it deeper, that's even better, but um, I, I will like how you broke that out. That, that's a good, that's a good description.
And it is, every member of the planning commission can look at that document and, you know, you know, when we get back to it, come to the meeting with a list of, I feel really strongly about this and this is why. But with that in mind, that we do want to get the subdivision regs passed and approved. And, you know, we gotta, we gotta find that place and, you know, that we're getting the important stuff addressed, but we're, we're also getting the document, um, adopted and passed. So.
That's the minimum.
Excuse me?
That's the minimum standard to get it, to get it done. The, the plan as it is renamed and with the subdivision regulations put in, but no other changes. We'd like to at least do that.
Right. But I'm saying that along the way, we, you know, if everyone, like comes with, you know, their suggestions that, you know, and, and thought about it, so not, you know, and so we will, I think we will have time to have those discussions if we're efficient about it.
Well, the, the other, the other thing too is if we're gonna go back to the plan, we need to get crisp on what has to be done and get it done too. And then in a timely manner, and then we can think about what we've got for space after that to finish off the zoning regs.
Yeah, yeah. I think we agreed to that.
Good.
Okay.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second? Get someone second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
See you in two weeks.
Two weeks.